This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton, Emanuel.
Here.
Kincaid, Klinkhammer, Mitchell.
Here.
Strobel.
Here.
T. Walt, Von Hayden.
Here.
Weld.
Here.
Worthman, Jeong.
Here.
Welcome to the Monday, September 25, 2017, meeting of the Eau Claire City Council. At the Monday night meetings, the council holds public hearings and public discussions. The items on the agenda tonight will be deliberated and voted on in our legislative session tomorrow. The President of the City Council is, I will say, slightly ill tonight, and she's not going to be here, so that's why I'm running the meeting tonight. I want to welcome citizens who are joining us in chambers and mention that the council is grateful to community television for broadcasting these proceedings for those that cannot be here. I want to also say that the meeting tonight will be broadcast live on TV, and it will also be heard on the radio, but the livestream to the Internet is not working. So if you're using your Internet, you can't see us. If you have comments, if you're here tonight and you have comments but you prefer not to speak, there are some forms on the back table on blue paper. You can fill those out and leave them in the box on the table back there. They will be shared with the council before the meeting tomorrow. So the first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing on an ordinance amending the sign code. Mr. Ivory.
Good evening. The sign code changes being discussed tonight come from issues raised in a 2015 Arizona court case that involved the display of temporary signs that went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court. The court's decision was far-reaching as it affected most municipalities across the country. Although the court case primarily involved temporary signs, the court's decision actually affects all the different types of signs that are governed within our sign code. Because of the importance of this decision, the city manager and city attorney felt it was important to draft changes to the code this year rather than wait till next year when we had scheduled an update to the code. We are still looking at an update of the code next year where we'd be working with the Plan Commission and various organizations in the community. The planning staff has worked with Doug Hofer from the City Attorney's Office to draft these changes. Doug is here tonight in case you have any specific questions on the court case or any legal issues regarding the code itself that we're presenting tonight. The Plan Commission has discussed these changes three times over the course of the last 12 months, and that concluded the public hearing that they held last Monday night. The major issue that came out of the court case is that signs cannot be regulated based on the message or what they say. Another way, if a person has to look at the sign in order to make a determination on what the sign ordinance says for that, then the ordinance probably is at odds with the court case. Content neutrality is the term used in terms of this particular issue. As an example, in our code, the Eau Claire code, in terms of as it relates to awning signs, has a provision that only the name of the business can be listed on an awning, and that is, in terms of that can be displayed on the sign. And that's called an identification sign. In this case, since that particular provision relates or regulates the content that can be on that awning, that would be contrary to the court decision that was made by the U.S. Supreme Court. There are some exceptions to this, and I'll talk about those in a few minutes. So that being said, we have studied the ruling, talked with other legal entities in the state, other conferences with the Planning Association, and based on our review, there are some traditional areas of signage that we feel that can continue to be regulated that are in our ordinance. This is some examples of those. First of all, off-premise signs and on-premise signs continue to be regulated and looked at separately, even though these are somewhat content-based. You have to look at the sign to determine whether it's off-premise or on-premise, but opinions that have come forward indicate that we can still look at those two separately and regulate those two. Ordinances can provide differing standards between residential districts and commercial districts, and then going even further between commercial districts, for example, like our neighborhood commercial and our general commercial. We can have different standards there because of those types of districts are so different. Sign districts relating to specific geographic areas can provide differing standards. We have four sign districts within the city, two in the downtown area, one over in Water Street, and then one down on Washington Avenue, so we continue to have those standards for those sign districts. Some of the traditional things that an ordinance regulates can continue related to some of the dimensional things, such as the size of the sign, the height of a pole sign, illumination standards, a number of signs, setback of signs, and we can even get into design issues related to a sign. And then lastly, and quite importantly, is that based on some of the opinions that came out of the court case is that standards can be established for signs to provide a warning, have a governmental purpose, or have a public safety or informative purpose of directing or guiding people either to a site or within a site. And that's kind of a key thing with the way we've dealt with this particular court case. Based on this direction, then, the staff has attempted to work and try to remove the majority of the content-based wording to a point where we feel the ordinance is sound and could potentially withstand a challenge in the future. In making these changes, we've tried to retain most of the standards within the current ordinance, so we decided not to try to do a whole new ordinance and start from scratch, but basically work with what we had and try to make the appropriate changes. So with that, I'd like to just highlight a couple of the changes in the code. First of all, related to the identification signs, and I alluded to that with my example with the awning signs, again, identification signs are those that specifically only identify the name of the business, and we have several references of those in the code. In our residential districts, we only allow identification signs, so those would be like for apartment buildings, or a nursing home, or a school, normally non-residential uses that would be allowed. So basically, what our current code says is you can only have the name of that and no other product advertising or anything like that. Within our C-1A district, which is our office professional district, again, the sign code states that only the name of the business is allowed. You're not supposed to be putting signage for products that might be sold. So for example, for an insurance company in a C-1A district, you can give the name of the insurance company, but you wouldn't be, under the current code, you wouldn't be able to advertise products that are sold by that insurance company. And then the same thing with awnings, just the name of the awnings, the name of the business would be allowed to be on the awnings. Kind of an offshoot of that is signage for motor fuel canopies. Our code says that only the name of the business is supposed to be listed on the motor fuel canopy or fuel pricing, so those are the two limitations. Again, those are all content-based things. So with this change, the identification sign basically goes away. That is deleted from our ordinance. So within these contexts here, they still have to provide on-premise advertising, but what they can advertise really gets broadened more so than just the name of the business, but products, phone numbers, emails, and all those types of things can now be advertised on their signs. The next major section relates to temporary signs, and then signs that are exempt from permits. Now, we have a whole section in the code that has standards for certain signs, but we exempt them from having to go forward and get a permit, but they're very important parts of our code. Going back to the provision here that the opinions, the court indicated that an ordinance can have standards that provide warning, governmental purpose, or direct traffic either on, within, or to a site. We use that particular provision when looking at the temporary signs and the signs exempt from permits, and we broke those signs into two classifications, one that would have that public safety or government function, and then ones that are more of a general purpose. Ones of the public safety and government, those would be more like directional types of signs within the city. General purpose would be those like a banner that a business would want to put up, maybe a special sign that a church wanted to put up for a particular festival that they're going to have, a grand opening sign. Those are all kind of general purpose types of signs. So we reformatted these two sections to basically put the signs into these two classifications, and then within this classification, there is somewhat of a content-based language because they are providing that warning. Couple other changes I just wanted to highlight. An example related to businesses with drive-up windows, or in the current code, they're called menu board signs. We had to change that since a menu board sign is a content-based sign. We changed the provisions that basically indicate that a business that has a drive-up can then have a sign, so we had to kind of change the formatting of that. And then that provides some general better oversight over that, then that'll be reviewed by the Plan Commission as part of the site plan review process. There is a clause that was inserted on page 15 called the substitution clause. This is something that the attorneys have indicated that all ordinances should incorporate this provision into their updates, and it basically says, "Any sign authorized by this chapter may contain a non-commercial message." So what that means is any sign that is allowed within a commercial district, if the owner of that business chooses to substitute a business sign for more of a personal viewpoint sign, they would have allowed to do that. And then lastly, just wanted to touch upon, for our downtown area, we were approached by the representative from the Board of Directors of the Confluence Arts Center that's being built, and as they are going forward, looking at plans for their facility, right now in the downtown area, the sign size limitation is 100 square feet, and they are anticipating that they would like to be able to at least have consideration of a sign or signs that would be larger than that. So we incorporated a provision in the code that would provide for conditional use permit in our downtown area that would allow for consideration of a business to have a sign larger than 100 square feet. And then within that provision, it's on page 26, basically would provide the criteria that the Plan Commission would review if such an application came forward. So with that, the ordinance, to summarize, these changes to the ordinance staff are not particularly excited about, but we do feel that they're legally necessary to comply with the decision that was handed down back in 2015. In addition, we may need to tweak or kind of fine-tune some of these changes in a year or so after we kind of really see what the impact of some of these changes are. So we're kind of leaving that open, that we may have to come back before you, six months from now, or a year from now, and make a few changes. This went to the Plan Commission last Monday night, and they recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ivory. Are there any questions? Councilmember Strobel.
Yes, I have a bunch of things circled that I thought I might be able to ask questions on. Okay. So let's go with two right away, Pat. Mr. Ivory, the directory sign, that's crossed out on here, so an example of that would be directional for like, there's a building that's got eight businesses in it, and now it posts a directory sign. Is that saying you can't regulate that, or is that saying that they can't have those anymore?
They can still have them. What we're saying is we can't specifically, in the code, in the current code, we have a couple provisions where, for example, a mall type of a facility can have a directory sign, and basically what that's saying, it's limited to only listing the businesses within that mall. Under the change, they still can have that sign. We're not taking that away from them, but if they choose to substitute that for just a general advertising sign, they can do so. So it gives the business owner more flexibility, but we did not take away the right for them to have that sign. Now, that's being said, within most multiple tenant buildings, the Plan Commission has to review a sign plan, so as part of a sign plan, we still have some control in terms of how these different signs are going to be used. So we feel that we're not necessarily throwing out all these provisions. We still have some control because of that sign plan.
And then my second question, feather banners. Those were added to the list of approved or regulated, I guess?
That is basically a clarification. Right now, they are not allowed. They're prohibited, and because of the changes that we're making here because of the court case, we wanted to specify specifically what they are. The reason for the change here is because in our current code, the provisions for flags right now, the code says you can have flags that represent the United States, the state of Wisconsin, or our corporate flag. And with this change, those three flags potentially could become signs. So we want to be very careful about how that is implemented out in the field, so we want to make sure there's a specific distinction between a flag and then what we refer to as the feather banners, which are prohibited. So we're not changing the code. We're just clarifying that there's a distinction between a flag and then what you, those feather banners or both flags.
So are the feather banners permitted?
No, they're prohibited.
They're prohibited?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
They are now, and they, under the new code, they will be prohibited also.
Okay. And when others are done, I would have a couple more. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, perhaps we'll see if there's anyone here to speak on this, and then we'll come back to you. I would also say that Mr. Hofer was kind enough to spend an hour with me on my 30 questions, so that's another possibility. Thank you, Mr. Ivory. Before we start this public hearing, I want to just say that speaking at the public hearing is limited to five minutes, and we help you chart that time by a series of lights that's on the podium. When you start speaking, a green light will go on. When the light turns to yellow, you have one minute left, and then when the light turns to red, we'll ask you to wind up your comments. And we do this so that everyone has an opportunity to speak and that the council has an opportunity to hear everyone in the room. So I'll ask now if there is anyone here that would like to speak to the sign code ordinance. Anyone on signs? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and ask Mr. Strobel if he'd like to ask a couple more questions. Councilmember Strobel, sorry.
Yes, I would. I just have four sections. It's a lengthy, lengthy thing. I just have four questions. If Mr. Ivory could clear them up. You talked about in here the window, window signage. Could you tell me what's changing on that?
There really is no change to that. It's just more of a clarification. The current, the current code does not get specifically into regulating what content can be on a window sign, so there is no really change on that. The window sign can occupy up to 40 percent of the window area, and that remains the same. Probably the one change that now I'm thinking about it is in the C-1A district, they, again, in the C-1A district, since in the past you could only identify the name of the business, they could have the name of the business as a window sign. Now they can, they can put a product name in their window.
Okay. Coming to my other circled ones here. They're here. Under, I don't know, H, the part that says historic painted wall signs, it's all crossed out there. In the past, it said that if a building had some type of historically painted like billboard on it or something, that the person that owned it could potentially spruce that up, and now that's sort of crossed out. Could you tell me how, I don't know that we have any of those in town, but...
We, that hasn't, that particular section, we've never utilized that since this code was updated in 1990, but the reason we took that out is that it's a content-based provision in terms of that it specifically talks about, that it would only be implemented if it advertises a product or business is no longer there. So we'd have to look at the sign in order to make that determination, so that's why we removed it. But it's something that we haven't utilized in the past. I don't envision it as being an issue.
Thank you, then. Just down to two more. Number C, under section 16.16, this is crossed out, open house directional signs, signs pertaining to an open house for the sale or lease of a property. That's crossed out. Are those no longer allowed, or?
What page is that on?
Oh, that's under, well, on my, page 30 on this.
Okay.
Number C, letter C. Open house directional signs.
What we did was, open house directional signs was deleted because that's a content-based type of a sign, we felt, but in the paragraph right above that, where it lists as residential event yard sign, the open house is put back in there. So we just renamed the sign, and the allowance for a sign for open houses is in section, that part, subpart two.
Okay, thank you. The very last one, and I think it's maybe the last one on your program here, number 12, residential non-commercial message sign. One sign is permitted on a residentially zoned property to provide a non-commercial message. Such signs shall be either a wall, window, or ground sign, and this display can be, would be limited to 60 days. So are you saying that around the neighborhoods, people can put up a sign anytime they want, saying whatever they want for up to 60 days? And that looks like it was added to the code, and I guess I just wonder...
Again, this was one where we, it's already in the ordinance where we moved it. It's on, the current provision is on page 39, where we have a non-commercial message sign. Basically, it's the same provision, but we shifted it from the exempt section to the temporary section, and the reason being for that sign is that it allows for a person, if they want to say some particular personal viewpoint on a subject, they're allowed to do so, and based on the court cases that we've seen, we have to make that allowance for someone to display that viewpoint. So it's currently in the code. We just shifted it from one section to another, and then we did limit it to 60 days. Under the current code, there's no limit. You could have it up permanently.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Emanuel.
Thank you. Can you help me understand what you were referring to when you talked about the three types of flags a business could have, whether it was Wisconsin, the United States, or a corporate flag?
Right.
Can you tell a little bit more about that?
Yes, the current code says that you can have three flags, and then if you have a larger lot, then there's provisions for additional flags, but the provision is a content-based standard in terms of you can have a flag for the, for the U.S., you can have a flag for Wisconsin, or you can have a corporate, registered corporate flag. And since that's a content-based provision, what the change, when we discussed that, there were, I guess, two ways we looked at doing that. One was not allowing flags, and that didn't seem reasonable, but so we kept the same standard. You could still have three flags, but now under this change because of the Supreme Court, we can't regulate what goes on those flags. So a business could continue to, you know, have a Wisconsin or U.S. flag, but if they chose to put up an hiring now flag, they could do so.
So if a company wanted to put up a flag of a different nation, maybe their trading partner, or just another country flag, is that permissible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, then. Have you worked with assigned companies on this?
We have not. Since this was a direction from, from Mr. Peters, we worked in-house on this and had to come up with the standards. In terms of looking back on previous code amendments, we've had about 24 amendments to the sign code since 2000, and when any of those have gone forward, we have not specifically gone out and notified sign contractors of any of these 24 changes. I guess our feeling was if we start notifying one particular group, then we should maybe be starting to notify other groups or organizations. We weren't sure where we would stop. We do neighborhood associations, business associations, so in this case, we did not.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ivory. The next item tonight, then, is a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning properties located on the south side of Hudson Street, west of 7th Avenue from RM to R2P, and to adopt the general development plan for reduced lot size for existing duplexes. Mr. Tufti.
These are the properties. They are located on the south side of Hudson Street between 7th and 8th, Lake Shore Elementary Schools across the road to the north, the city parks to the west. There are R2 zonings then on the other sides of the property. A little bit better map actually showing of the seven properties. Five of them are existing duplexes. Two of them are single-family homes. The green is the school and the park. The orange is the surrounding R2 zoning, which is what is being proposed for this property. And the nearest RM zoning is over here, south of our park. And then finally, an aerial photo showing the school, the park, and the neighborhood being mostly older homes, being mostly single families, some that have been converted into duplexes. This rezoning was initiated by the city Plan Commission. Again, the property has five duplexes and two single-family homes. The neighborhood association requested the Plan Commission to start this process, and we did attach their letter and a section from their neighborhood plan that supports this rezoning. The comprehensive plan does identify these properties as being appropriate for low-density residential development, which is R2 zoning, not the current RM zoning for these properties. We believe the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the zoning of other properties within the area. When the Plan Commission considers these types of downzonings of properties, it does not want to create non-conforming uses. In this case, these duplexes are on lots that are 8,316 square foot in size. In an R2 district duplexes, new duplexes need a 10,000 square foot lot. There are provisions in code that allow, under a planned development zoning, which this is, to reduce lot sizes, and there are provisions in the zoning code that allow Plan Commission to grant conditional use permits for existing duplexes. So in this situation, to avoid non-conforming uses of these five duplexes, the Plan Commission... So in this situation, to avoid non-conforming uses of these five duplexes, the Plan Commission did grant conditional use permits for each of them. Uh, this change in the, in, uh, zoning also does, uh, vary the setbacks for the property. An R.M. district has a twenty-foot front yard setback, where the R. two that's proposed has a thirty-foot front yard setback. Again, to avoid non-conforming structures being created with this rezoning, the Plan Commission has recommended we maintain that twenty-foot front yard setback with this rezoning, again, using the planned development zoning that's being proposed. So the Plan Commission has recommended approval of this rezoning with the understanding or conditions that with their recommendation of the rezoning, Plan Commission did approve the conditional use permits for the five existing duplexes, and that a twenty-foot front yard setback is maintained. Uh, the Plan Commission did receive a petition in opposition to this request, and we, we placed that in your packet. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Councilmember Ron Hayden.
Uh, well, my question is, you know, you, you talked about granting the conditional use permits for these, uh, so we didn't have any non-conformity. What happens if they want to sell, expand, develop, anything else, uh, or remodel? What, what, what implications is this?
A conditional use permit is applied to the property, so sale of the property retains that conditional use permit. And they can remodel, uh, place additions, uh, all those types of things on the property as provided under city code. They can repair those types of things.
So basically, it's the two single-family homes that are on there couldn't go to duplexes, then?
They could go to the Plan Commission and ask for a conditional use permit if they desired to convert, uh, to a duplex.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you. Um, the, I assume that the, um, they, they granted the twenty-foot setbacks because none of, none of these actually meet the thirty-foot setback?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And then just one general question. Is there any other areas in the neighborhood? It looked, the map I had here mainly was all R. two. Is there any R. one in the neighborhood?
No, this neighborhood has all R. two or R.M. zoning on the periphery, particularly along, uh, Chippewa Street, uh, is where the majority of R.M. zoning is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Tufti. Is there anyone that would like to speak about this item?
Harder, and we have two properties in this neighborhood. As a property owner, it's pretty upsetting that if our property would burn down, we would be unable to build it back as a duplex. My experience is, I'm also a city letter carrier for the city of Eau Claire, and I've done this for eleven years. And five of those years I spent in this neighborhood. And I've seen the single families that are not duplexes in the neighborhoods. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Um, and I guess my experience hasn't been a good one. I've got numerous houses, which I won't list the addresses, where they're more transient groups that end up in these neighborhood homes. And you have pit bulls, you have, you know, they had a car theft, they had a shooting on their front lawn. Um, it's, it's scary, not only as a carrier, but to live in these neighborhoods, to walk past pit bulls every day. So, um, I guess that's a huge concern. Also, it's a Division Three school in Eau Claire, and we're trying to draw kids into our schools and promote, like, the, um, Confluence Project, go to concerts. And the people that sometimes ends, end up in these homes don't exactly have the income for that. So I don't think you're bringing that income into Eau Claire. You're not helping your city, your neighborhood. You're getting more people that can't really afford that. So I guess it's upsetting to know that our properties that we purchased, one of them, like eighteen years ago, in the, in the idea that it would always be a duplex, that that gets changed, and that could potentially affect our family and our income if that would, heaven forbid, burn down. So, um, you know, we take a lot of pride in our, in our properties, and, um, I think we have excellent kids that rent, you know, kids that are four-point-os, kids that want to be nurses. So, um, I think to change that is extremely disappointing. So I think it not only hurts the city of Eau Claire, it hurts us, it hurts everybody. And in the long run, I think years from now, when that income's not coming into Eau Claire, when those kids aren't going to the concerts, aren't spending their money downtown, it hurts everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harder. Are there any questions for her? Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this matter?
Oh, perfect, okay. My name's Chad Olson from Eau Claire, born and raised in Eau Claire. This is my son Blake, who's here to help me with this. But also, he's another reason why I purchased this house back when I did in, in two thousand and five. But as you can see, some of these pictures here, when I did buy it, it was, it was in utter shambles, I guess you could say. I mean, another landlord did own it, um, didn't manage it that well. So I looked at it, and the reason I bought it was because, there's some of my boys there that, uh, kind of were there through all those times when I rebuilt this, other friends and family. My youngest boy there, who's now fourteen. But anyways, um, father-in-law, just going through these real quick here, I think we, it's almost done, but it'll go through and show you what, it won't do anything, okay. You got this going pretty quick, which will, you got one minute. Anyways, trying to go through this to, to show you what, what I did over the, um, that time when I purchased this. This was the first property that I bought back in two thousand and five. And again, the reason I did buy it was, um, because it was R.M., because it made sense that I could tear this thing and gut the thing out, redo all the wiring, um, to, to rent it out to students. And I thought, you know, the area's great, it's by the park, it's by the, the football, the Carson Park, the, the lake there. And it worked out great. And when I was done, I mean, I had a, I had a great piece of property. It was like brand-new inside. I had no problems renting it. Always had great students in there, great, great renters. So I guess my point is, like she said, i- if it were to burn down, if it were to be destroyed by, um, natural events, um, we wouldn't be able to replace it. With the current, um, plans to change it to R. two, I would, I would be limited with really a, a three-bedroom house, which would drastically reduce, um, what this brings in for me, for income. And I did for my, my boys, for a long-term investment, so, um, mom was involved, everyone. So, you know, looking at these pictures, I was trying to come up with something this, this morning, once I heard that, okay, we, we can get up and speak about this. Wanted to put it together to, to kind of show you what I did. I also own, um, another property. Let's see. Put it over the top. Next, on the corner there. And this duplex is right there. So they're both, um, one is a single family, this is a duplex. And, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a lot of fun for me. Uh, my boys helped me manage it, mow the lawns, take care of it that way. So, yeah, it's, it's a little bit discouraging when I, when I did hear that this would possibly change to an R. two, because the lure was that it was R.M., and, and I could, um, invest in it like I did with time, money, and, um, mostly time. So, um, I would hope that it could continue to stay R.M. because of the fact that if something were to happen, it would take away the value of what I put into it. And ultimately take away the value of, for my, my boys. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Just a second. Are there, are there any questions? Councilmember Strobel?
I really don't have a question, but I just wanted to comment and, uh, show some appreciation for all the work you did put in that. It looks like you did an extensive, extensive job of refurbishing the place.
Absolutely, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening. Do I give my name? I forget. Oh, I'm, my name is Helene Smire. I live at three twenty Broadway Street in the historic Randall Park neighborhood, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association. Um, I, I think that perhaps what I would like to do for the people who have, who are objecting to this is give a little summary of where we're coming from and why this is happening right now, this request for this change. When we redid our plan, which was three years ago, and it was approved, a lot of changes have happened since then. There are four main ones that really impact this, um, connection to what we're talking about tonight. Well, number one, the redevelopment of downtown has created a renewed interest to live in our neighborhood. We have examples of that happening right now. Two, the university is planning to create more housing for their students, to keep them closer to campus, and within the next three to fifteen to twenty years, they'll be drawing some of that student population away, some of those most lucrative rentals. That should be considered. That would, could potentially, for us, create some houses that landlords will want to sell. And then, the third thing is, we've created our, um, not-for-profit revitalization corporation, which gives us the ability to purchase those homes when and if all this occurs, which is very gradual, and I think you, you all know that. But we need to be ready to prepare for this precisely because of that one example that was given right before me of the landlord who didn't care for the property. If there are other properties like that, we would like the opportunity to purchase, rehab, sell for owner occupation. And that brings me to the fourth reason. Oh, that is right there, never mind. Which was the approval of the Water Street TIF, which happened just two, two weeks ago. Not only are you, is the city directing funds into this neighborhood for revitalization, but also it provides us financial leverage to search out matching funds so we can actually move forward on the plans that we have. So I hope that helps the people who are in objection, because it kind of leads right into what your objections are, that the neighborhood is, you point out very well, it is in need of revitalization. It's also in need of stability. We're, we're out of balance, we have more renters than people who are owner-occupied. And I, I can't stress enough that, um, we don't want this to become a contentious between landlords and homeowners. We've been together now for fifty years, and we're, we survive very well. We appreciate the landlords who keep their properties up. We help the landlords every time we come before you, or we ask for health department, or code, code enforcement help on any issues that, that face the neighborhood. It also helps landlords with their properties. We call in, um, things we see happening to landlord properties when they're not there, like ten kids on a rooftop. That's pretty dangerous. So we really need to focus on working together for what's best for this neighborhood. And in light of all the other things happening around us, we really feel that if we neglected to rezone this area, we would be doing a disservice to landlords and everyone alike. Because the, this area right here, we have sort of targeted, that little neighborhood could be a neighborhood within a neighborhood, because those houses are more affordable, generally speaking. Maybe not the duplexes, but an owner-occupied duplex is an affordable option for a younger couple. But you, we could have younger families moving closer to the school. We could have older people who wish to downsize and maybe want to rehab, have it owner-occupied. Well, you could have other people who need, who would want all the facilities, the proximity to the medical facilities, um, being able to get on that trail and walk to tennis courts and to the new, um, event center that's, that's going to be put up. I mean, the, the area is just rich for opportunities to make some changes that include owner occupation. We will never have the kind of money the developer has who can move in, buy two properties, tear them down, put up a three or fourplex. That's not our intent. And if that were to happen here, if we neglect to change the zoning, and that happens, it will adversely affect the values of their properties also. So, um...
Ms. Smire will have to ask you to...
Oh.
Conclude.
Wrap it up?
Conclude.
Okay, all right. Well, I hope this shows, goes to our intent, and I hope it helps the landlord understand why we were asking for this, and I hope that you consider, um, approving it.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't just hope, I ask that you approve it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Ron Hayden?
The question I would have is, I, I think from what you were saying, there, there's no intent by the Neighborhood Association to force any of these duplexes out. If they continue maintaining them and operating them, uh, and, and keeping them up, there wouldn't be any type of forced eviction of any of these.
We're not that powerful, though.
Okay.
No.
Why, I...
That's not our intent, and it would, we'd have to be able to find landlords who are willing, who see our purpose of revitalization and agree that it's, it, a neighborhood that's unstable is not a neighborhood that works for anybody, and I think the male woman spoke to that. If it, in past years, it's become very heavy with rentals, and it's just our intent to rewrite that a bit so we can help keep the neighborhood stable.
Okay. So the, the main intent here is to prevent the future of tearing them down and, and coming up with larger units in there?
Yes, because I don't think there's anybody who understands the impact of density better than the landlords. I've heard them talk about, um, renters who sometimes will sneak in another person, and how that affects their, you know, behavior, it affects the garbage, it affects parking. We just want that opportunity to, um, have more owners there. If you haven't noticed, you know, I'm kind of aging. I won't be here forever to be watching out for properties. So we, we do need to encourage younger families into the neighborhood, and this area is kind of perfect for that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Smire.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this item?
My name is Chris Harder. I own Mother of Prue Rentals, and I own one of the properties at seven twenty-five Hudson Street, um, right here, right across from the school. Just like the previous landlord, uh, came up and said, he went through and revitalized it, and I picked this property up, and I sent you all an email last week. Hopefully you guys got a chance to read it. How we picked these up, it was, it was dilapidated, um, went through and redid it all. You saw some pictures of the inside, I'm not going to bore with any more of that. But the thing is, we, we keep talking about high-density housing, and that's where we want the students. We want the students to stay in the Water Street area, stay down by the Confluence area. But you know what? The students that I'm getting, not only students, but other folks, we'll talk about that, but the students that I'm getting are upperclassmen. I've got R.A.s, the, the, that moved away from the dormitories. They're, they're tired of the high density. They want to get out, and they want to have a yard. So we keep thinking that owner-occupied's the only way to go, but it's really not, because not everybody can afford their own house. They simply can't. And we're removing those people away from that. So having duplexes like this is an important part of the neighborhood, as long as they're kept up. You know, and I thank Helen for the nice comments, um, about the landlords, and, and for them watching over us and things like that. But the, the bottom line is, is if we lose this, if this burns down, um, it's gone. You know, you're not going to have that alternative housing for these folks. I have people that, uh, worked, worked at Mayo live here. I've had people that had children that went across the street, you know? So it's not just students. So that's something to think about, too. Maybe we should take a look at the size of the lots for the R. two, you know, to build back. You know, maybe we should, uh, have that allowed in this point. And it's not only us, it's the, the people that sell us these homes, too. I own another house, um, my, the male lady, Sandy is, is my wife. She mentioned we own another house. The house that we bought there, too, uh, was from the neighborhood, and it was a single family. We bought that. And the chances are, the price that we paid, no one else would probably want to pay that because we're landlords, and we can go and put that money into it. When you have a duplex like this, or an... When you have a duplex like this, or an income-producing property, you can afford to stick money into it. Where you have a property that, that is a single family, you can't afford to stick it into it, or if the income isn't there, it's simply, the money's not there to go and put money in like, like we have. We take a great pride in our properties. I got kind of a chuckle here, this was a nice little thing my tenant sent to me. You know, the, the house that I bought was infested with bats, and we went ahead and took care of the, took care of that, we took care of the plumbing, took care of electrical, and brought it up, and this was a single-family house that landlords go ahead and pick up and revitalize. Sure, there's some bad ones out there. Sure, we have some bad tenants out there from time to time, but you know what? Those bad tenants, we can move them out in less than a year. If you have a bad homeowner, we all know how hard that is to get rid of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harder. Are there any questions? I see none, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this matter? Anyone else? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and move on to item three, which is a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property at 3807 East Hamilton Avenue from R1 to R3P for an eight-unit apartment. Mr. Tufti.
This is the property on East Hamilton at Pine Lodge Road, and it backs onto Highway 53. It's Robin's School, that's a single-family home, and these are some new mini warehouses that were recently built. There's an aerial photo showing Robin's, the single-family home, and this is now showing vacant, the new mini warehouses are on that property. This is the site plan, showing the eight-plex on the front of the property, and then detached garages and parking to the back with access off East Hamilton. And that is the building elevation, showing then the front of the eight-plex. There's also a narrative provided by applicant in your packet. This is an eight-unit building with two-bedroom units. It has required parking for sixteen stalls, they have eleven garage stalls and five surface parking stalls on the proper, on the site plan. The Plan Commission designated this site as part of the 2015 comprehensive plan update as being appropriate for commercial development. In the areas designated as commercial on the planned land use map, the city's comprehensive plan states the city will consider residential zoning based on the following, and then there's a list of six criteria that we included in the packet. The Plan Commission did find an eight-plex on this property is consistent with the standards that are noted in the comprehensive plan, and we would note there is adequate road capacity to handle the traffic from this proposed use, and the drainage from this facility was reviewed as part of the site plan for the project. Of special note, we would note typically there's a fifty-foot setback established along a state right-of-way. In this case, the site plan shows a twenty-foot setback for these detached garages. The Plan Commission felt that was appropriate because of the hill, or this roadway is way above grade in terms of this site, and that it provides garage parking for this proposed use instead of a surface parking lot. The Plan Commission did find compliance with the criteria noted in the comprehensive plan and has recommended approval of this rezoning, and the site plan for this eight-plex has been approved with the conditions in the letter to applicant. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none, thank you. Is the applicant here and wish to make a statement?
Good evening. Michael Benrood, 4535 Village Oaks Circle, Eau Claire. There really is not a lot I want to say other than that we always do nice projects. Hopefully you have seen our project across the street, which was a warehouse facility, which we think turned out very well. I promised you it would be a quality project, and it is. This also is a, going to be a very quality building.
Excuse me, do you have a picture there that you want to show?
Yes.
Just move it up.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Yes, that's, that's the building, and then the garages are like so. We own, own roughly two-hundred-and-sixty rental units, and hopefully you don't hear about us because we don't, we don't have any problems, fortunately. We take care of our properties very well. Yes, it was mentioned that this property was master plan for commercial zoning. We don't have a good commercial use in mind. Actually, we think that this use probably fits better across the street from the school and a commercial entity, so, so I'm hopeful you'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benrood. Are there any questions? Okay, I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that would like to speak about this item?
Which mic do you use? I was supposed to be over here. I like...
One is, okay.
Thank you, I guess Acting Chairwoman Mitchell. It's...
Your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for allowing me to share some concerns about this 3807 Hamilton. I'm Jimmer Ness, Eau Claire resident for about three and a half months, so I don't know many of you. I currently reside at 2926 Pine Lodge Road, about two blocks, blocks north of the proposed site we're talk, excuse me, talking about. The Planning Department has been, I should compliment them on all of the information they provide, it's been very helpful. I did talk with Councilman Klinghammer, and he did inform me he would not be available, he'd be out of the country tonight, so he suggested I try to share some of the information with the existing council members. I don't know, there are six of you present, I'm not sure what will happen tomorrow, and then not, enough people are probably here to be informed of my concerns. I would like to speak basically in opposition to the rezoning. The agenda item, rezoning the property at 3807 Hamilton Avenue from R1 to R3P, to approve not only that, but the site plan for an eight-unit or an eight-plex. And as you can note on here, all of these areas around here are R1s, and this is basically an entry point to look at this whole development, which is, in my opinion, a very high-end residential development area, and going off Clay Street, the very same thing has happened, primarily as R1, on occasion R2. General concerns, again, the one I mentioned, the zoning documents review suggests the area is one of low-density residential housing. As you'll note on page six of the staff report, the plan unit is right next to a very busy, very active Highway 53, and it's right next to the bridges while which amplifies the noise. It really vibrates in that area. I don't think anyone present would be willing to locate and live in that particular environment. The plan talks about the eight-plex being two-bedroom, one-unit, or one-bathroom units. It seems, in that I have like five grandchildren in college, and I've had the experience of trying to find housing for them, none of them are willing to go to bathroom, one bathroom units anymore, and it seems like new construction that would be inadequate. No storage is shown on the, in the units as the plan that I reviewed, and it would seem that if anyone are moving in should have some kind of storage available, unless, I suppose, if you want to move across the street and rent from the, the new units that are available there. So as I look at this, it, it could be a solid plan. It concerns me both in terms of the eight-plex, which is totally inconsistent in terms of density as I see it with the rest of the area, and commercially would find much better. It would seem to me that eight relatively low-cost, as I think of it, units with two bedrooms, no storage, one bathroom, being across the playground would be problematic for parent comfort. Robin's Elementary School is very active on weekends and evenings, and it's right north of the proposed site. I'm also concerned that, I don't know if there will be any right to change the setback from the highway, and even if you get that right and can provide garages, oops, I'm down in town in thirty seconds, maybe I better jump to summary, I, I'm really concerned that there's going to be a lot of surface parking, and if storage is needed, it'll be in the garage. In summary, the eight-unit apartment is, on this small piece of land, doesn't fit my concept of transition to our residential area. My request is for additional month, for, prior to council action, to inform area property owners of the rezoning request and the eight-unit apartment being considered, to adequately determine their concerns. Your decision will have an impact on our neighborhood for decades. I suspect it would be a great piece of property for a park, it probably could be called Benrood Park. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I see none, thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Rod Ellison, I live at 2928 Pine Lodge Road. I became aware of this proposed eight-plex by driving by the property and seeing things going on, and I saw a little box with some information. When I first read it, I was a little confused because it said it was on East Hamilton Road or Avenue. The actual development shows it on East Hamilton running east and west, whereas East Hamilton actually turns the corner and comes down under the underpass. That's not Pine Lodge Road till you get past the stop sign. I'm concerned that putting this in will have big effects on the school. That place is really a traffic jam, or a zoo in the mornings and at night when the kids are getting out, the buses are going through. The other part of my concern is the previous item you discussed, you're changing your zoning to try to maintain homogeneous zoning in a neighborhood, whereas this looks like you're going backwards. Everything is zoned R1 or R2, and now you want to zone it for an eight-plex. My other concern is the type of people that'll rent there. They don't look like real high-end apartments on the inside. As Jim discussed, there's no storage, so they'll probably use the garages, so then their cars will be all parked outside. We have duplexes up the road on the east side of Pine Lodge Road, which basically I think had been rented by the same people for a number of years. I'm afraid if you change the zoning here, it just opens the door for more rezoning along that side of the street to put in more eight-plex apartments. All I have for concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. Any questions for Speaker? I see none, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, then we'll...
I have a question for Mr. Tufti.
Okay.
On Hamilton there, between the school and the, the site, is there any on-street parking
I'm trying to remember the bus pickup areas. I'm not sure, I'm going to answer, I'm not sure. I know there's some bus pickup along, and they actually, actually go into the site, but I'm not sure.
Well, ask Mr. Tufti to bring that information tomorrow, how about that?
I can check it, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That was it, thank you.
All right. Then we'll close the public hearing, and on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Weld, we are adjourned without objection.
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Kincaid?
Here.
Klinghammer?
Mitchell?
Here.
Strobel?
T-Walt?
Here.
Van Hayden?
Here.
Weld?
Here.
Worthman? Jeong?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and welcome everyone to the legislative session of the Eau Claire City Council on this September 26th of 2017. During its legislative session, the council deliberates and takes action on the agenda items before us. We have prepared for this responsibility by collaborating with staff and working with citizens, and reading a considerable amount of materials in our packet. We do arrive this afternoon ready to fulfill our duty, and we welcome those citizens who are joining us in chambers and are grateful to community television, as always, for streaming and broadcasting proceedings for people who cannot attend in person. We have important items on our agenda, so let us begin with our work. Our first order of business is the consent agenda. Do councilmembers have questions or wish to remove an item for separate consideration? On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, the consent agenda is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Van Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And the consent agenda is passed. I have one proclamation this afternoon for Fire Prevention Week. I would invite the representatives from the Fire Department to meet me at the podium. Usually I read the whole proclamation, but my voice is terrible, so I'm not going to. I'll just be a second. With me today at the podium is Deputy Chief Al Bertrand and Tony Biassi. We today are going to proclaim the Fire Prevention Week, which of course is celebrated or acknowledged in our nation, and certainly in Eau Claire. As always, we appreciate the service of the Fire Department, and have come to depend on you as an integral part of making our city a, a safe and growing place, so. As my voice isn't doing very well today, I won't be reading the whole proclamation, but as Deputy Chief Bertrand talks, perhaps we can learn the content of the proclamation.
I'd like to take this opportunity really to thank the council and other members of the community for the support that we get in our prevention efforts. It's oftentimes difficult to measure the differences made through prevention activities, but we do know that it makes a tremendous difference. The focus of the prevention, Fire Prevention Week is really on the prevention of fire, but here with the Eau Claire Fire Department, collaboration with a lot of other city departments, organizations, private industry, we really make efforts at total community risk reduction. So we're looking at things like fire prevention, but also health and wellness within the community, working with the Health Department and other agencies. We have a big focus on water safety efforts, and we've dramatically reduced the risk in our community related to our waterways and things that go... our community related to our waterways and things that go on like that. So again, just thank you very much for your support. We will continue our efforts, and couldn't do it without the help of the other people in our community. So thank you very much.
You can mount this with the menu. We continue our work this afternoon with a business agenda. Item 17 is a resolution granting a permanent expansion of a combination Class B and fermented malt beverage license to the Wigwam Tavern. Mr. Hofer.
Thank you. As you said, this is an application for a permanent expansion. Operationally, there really aren't going to be any differences other than Wigwam purchased some additional space right behind here, as you see marked on the map. What they plan to do is move the volleyball courts over to fit in this space here, and then they're going to expand the patio so that they're better able to accommodate beanbag toss and things like that without, you know, right now, they said when they do that, they have a few tables out there, and it just doesn't fit very well. So again, operationally, there aren't really any differences. The same expectations are in place now as there were previously. There weren't any objections from any of the members of the License Review Committee, and the applicant is here if you have any additional operational questions.
Questions for Mr. Hofer? I see none. Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember T-Walt, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 17 is moved and discussion. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
T-Walt?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Good luck with your expansion. Item 18 is a resolution approving procurement number 2017-56 for the Eau Claire Fire Department replacement of Station Number 10, bid package O2. Mr. Winsans will describe why we have two resolutions in front of us.
I too have a failing voice this evening, so I'll try to be short, and you're all limited on the number of questions. Station number, just by way of a little bit of background, Station Number 10 was constructed in 1949, so that station is nearly 70 years old. It is three stories in height with a lower-level storage or equipment bays, then equipment bays and living quarters on the main level, and then sleeping quarters in the upper level. It's about 9,700 square feet in size. As I said, it's got six apparatus bays. And in 2010, there was a report prepared that recommended that Station Number 10 be replaced. So for the last couple of years now, we've been working towards the replacement of Station Number 10. The station that we have now bid at this point is nearly 20,000 square feet in size. It's a single-story station, so no issues with handicapped accessibility or those types of issues. It's got five apparatus bays, at least the station that's being recommended by the administration. Separate sleeping accommodations for six persons, two unisex shower restroom facilities. When Station 10 was constructed in 1949, female firefighters weren't, I guess, even on the horizon at that point. So accommodations for male and female firefighters were not included in that station. It's got a training room to accommodate approximately 24 persons and then separate men's and women's public restrooms so that the training room can be used by outside entities as well. The floor plan of the station that's being recommended is on the screen. As you can see, this is the five-bay station that we will be recommending and does include the five apparatus bays. Just to point out that the first two, or the northerly two apparatus bays, contain frontline response equipment, including ambulance and a ladder. The remaining three bays primarily are used for storage of equipment. So the reserve ladder, various trailers, the boat, a boat, and then finally some police department equipment, including the MRAP, as well as their police vehicle and their trailer are included in that fifth bay. This is an elevation of the proposed station. As you can see, it is an exterior brick facade, and you can see the five apparatus bays. It is, I guess in my opinion, a nice-looking station, but nothing opulent at this point. Funding for the station has been included over the course of the last five years in the capital improvement program. There's a total of $4.721 million that has been included in various capital improvement programs over the last five years. Of note is that $500,000 was included in the 2018 capital improvement plan that was adopted by the city council earlier this year. The resolution that does award contracts for the five-bay construction does include language that would amend the 2018 capital improvement plan to provide additional funding beyond the $500,000 for the fire station. Because there is language in there that amends the already adopted 2018 capital improvement plan, that resolution will require eight affirmative votes in order to pass. We received a total of 92 bids for 26 separate contracts associated with the construction of this fire station. The base bid for the three-bay station, the total cost is $4.587 million for that station. There is sufficient funding within the currently appropriated funds and the funds approved for 2018 in the CIP to construct the three-bay station. There were two additive alternates that were bid. The first of those, alternate one, would add two bays, so a total of five bays, equipment bays in the fire station. This had an additional cost of $309,000 plus an additional amount for contingency and construction management. Alternate two included heavy-duty concrete in lieu of asphalt for the apron outside the apparatus bays. The additional cost for that was $25,506 plus contingency and construction management. Our staff is recommending award of the base bid plus alternates one and alternate two. Council did previously award a little bit over $563,000 in contracts related to the fire station for site work and foundations. The award before you this afternoon would be for $2,816,289.73. That would allow for construction of the fire station. Those two contracts are not the total for the fire station project. In addition, contracts have previously been awarded for construction management as well as design. And then there are also some owner-required items such as furnishings and equipment for the kitchen and those sorts of items that are not included in these two bids, but are included in the total project costs, which are below. The total cost of the station, including the bids before you and all of the other owner-supplied items and designing and project management, is $4,945,867. So this does exceed the available funds by $224,867. To provide those additional funds, staff is recommending that the 2018 through 2022 capital improvements plan be amended by reducing funding in various years for fire equipment apparatus. The fire chief has received revised estimates for these pieces of equipment from the equipment manufacturer that we've most recently been using and does believe that we can accomplish the equipment replacement at the reduced amounts and make funds available to complete construction of the five-bay fire station. So before you, our two resolutions. The first of those resolutions does award the base bid for the three-bay station plus additive alternate one for the alternate two, which is the heavy-duty concrete in lieu of the asphalt. That project is within the current budget and does not require any amendments to the capital improvement plan. We do feel that the heavy-duty concrete will reduce the long-term maintenance outside of those equipment bays. As we all know, asphalt doesn't have as long a life, and we will be running heavy equipment over the top. The second resolution approves the base bid plus both alternates one and alternate two and also makes amendments to the 2018-2022 CIP to make sufficient funding available for this project. Be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Winsans? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. If I recall the site plan correctly, the two additional bays being storage, that those bays will be accessed from the back of the building? Is that correct?
They have access both from the rear as well as the front of the building. And I mean, you can see in this elevation, the five garage doors on the front side of the building, and there's also access at the rear of the building.
The driveway was only wide enough for the three bays though, right?
It, the curb cut, if you will, was in front of the first three bays, but then the apron tapers out, so it does take in the other two bays.
Okay. And it's the heavy-duty concrete that is part of this, is that also in front of the two extra bays?
Yes, it is.
There are questions for Mr. Winsans? I'm looking hard for those little blue lights.
Been looking for red lights all these years.
Yeah. So is the, thinking that in the future, those two storage bays might be needed as regular bays or whatever you call them, or not?
Hard to predict the future. This is a satellite station. It's not a main station. Typically, most of the satellite stations I'm familiar with, you know, either two or three bays for primary response equipment is usually sufficient. An engine and an ambulance, you know, usually running out of that. But additional bays are necessary in order to be able to store the equipment that we've got at Station 10 at this point in time. So those additional trailers that we have, the Survive Alive trailer, boat trailer, hazardous response trailer, those are necessary pieces of equipment and need to be stored at one of our stations. We happen to store them at Station 10 right now, so we don't have another station that we could store them at if we don't include the additional bays at this station.
Any further questions? Is that, yeah. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question. It might be for Chief Bell, but really my question is just to see if we can have some additional public discussion about kind of how this translates to response time and emergency preparedness, which is, I think, our bottom line in serving the citizens in this consideration.
The best I can answer that question is the entire design of the station is for both the immediate emergent response, day-to-day calls, but we also looked at emergency planning as a whole for natural disasters or windstorms, loss of power. And some of the things that we put into the design were, you know, we could bring in generators to keep that facility running in case power's lost to the north side, for example, in long-term power. So it's not just a, we will have a small generator to keep, you know, so we can get the doors to go up so we can egress on emergencies, but also have access so if we bring in long-term power for a week or two weeks, hopefully not longer than that, that we have the ability to power the entire building with heat or air conditioning so that if it becomes a focal point for, as a resource center, that we'll have a facility that can meet that long-term emergency need for the community. And beyond that, if you want to focus your question more, I might be able to answer better.
Thank you so much. I might also talk about maybe some of that response time.
Response time. So we chose this location based off of a GIs study of where our current calls are in addition to the totality of our city borders. And looking at our response times for that region, going north has been an area of difficulty for us to get to within our set response times, within three to five minutes. And so we look at the Princeton Valley as we move the station a little further to the east and just a little bit north. We've improved that response time because that was a gap area for us. And as we've recently taken steps within the city to expand that via new infrastructure and new development, that is one of those gap areas that this station will improve upon through its new location. And it could be, you know, something simple as 30 seconds, but 30 seconds to a minute can mean a lot.
Thank you, Chief Bell. Other questions? I see none. Thank you. And any other questions? As is our custom then, on a motion by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item, oh, I have to back up a little bit. The chair will entertain a motion to move either, we'll call them Resolution One or Two, I guess. Is that clear? Is that clear for everyone? Item, Resolution One is three bays. Resolution Two is five bays. Is that clear?
I only see 18 on the agenda. We don't see those two.
They were emailed to us separately. The two resolutions were emailed to us separately along with the agenda. And maybe Ms. Merle can put them on the monitor.
Well, I saw them as supplementary, but the agenda before us is just the part of that I thought, so it's one.
Oh, the, yeah. I think subsequent information helped us clarify what's on our agenda as a, sort of turned out to be a placeholder, I guess, though. We can move either resolution tonight, so is that clear then? Councilmember Von Hayden?
If I understand it correctly, I move Resolution Two, the five-bay one. And if there's a second, I'll comment on it.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember T-Walt. Councilmember Von Hayden?
As was discussed when we had our original sessions on this, the advantage of the five-bay is planning for the future, and it also gives us the flexibility of being able to protect a lot of our equipment that we normally would have sitting on the outside. Also, by doing this at this point in time, even though we have to make an adjustment, unfortunately, thanks to the chief going out and getting some clarification on some additional bids, the money has just moved from one section to another, and so we have the funds available through the amending of the capital budget by changing what items we purchase out in the future, but we keep the total amount basically the same. And by doing this now, this will save us money in the long run because at some point in the time, we may need the other two bays, and if we're going to add those out in the future, the cost would be a way lot more than what we're currently expending, and so I recommend that the council approve the five-bay.
Thanks. Any further discussion? There's no blue lights on? Okay. There being none, clerk, please call the roll. It does require an eight-member vote to pass. It does require an eight-member vote to pass.
Councilmember Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Tewald?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. Item 19 is a resolution accepting the conveyance of permanent and temporary utility easements at two addresses on Coventry Court. Ms. Basem?
Before you is a resolution, to accept the permanent and temporary easements along Coventry Court. The easements are needed for utilities to go across Interstate 94 for the development on the other side for Mills Farm and Fleet. This shows a picture of each easement. We are looking at going, this will be the temporary easement along the property and the permanent easement stretching out the utilities on the other side for Mills Farm and Fleet. The purchase agreement is attached and the owners have agreed to sell to us the easements. And this was recommended by the Plan Commission at the September 18 meeting. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Basem? I see none. Thank you. Now, in a motion by Councilmember Mitchell, seconded by Councilmember Worthman, item 19 is moved. Discussion? There being non-clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Tewald?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye. And that resolution passes. Our final business resolution is one approving an agreement with the University of Wisconsin for participation in Career Ready Internship Program. Mr. Solberg?
The resolution before you approves our agreement with the University of Wisconsin O'Clare for our GIS intern for this next year. This will be our second year participating in the Career Ready Internship Program. What that program does is it provides students with financial need an opportunity to have real-world work experience in industry or with a governmental body. In our case, we are using it in our GIS program. This will be our second year utilizing this program. Last year was a wonderful learning experience, not only for the student, but our GIS program benefited from that. And the agreement reimburses the city for $1,937.70 or 120 hours of the student's time. The remainder of the student's time, we anticipate working 400 hours over the term of the agreement. The remaining portion of that will be paid for out of our intern budget that we have for our summer engineering interns and seasonal survey helpers. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Solberg? And I see none. Thank you. On a motion then by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, item 20 is moved. Discussion? And there being, oh, Councilmember Mitchell, sorry.
I just wanted to thank you for participating in this again. I think there's just such a good experience for internships for students, but especially paid internships, and $15 an hour is a really good thing, so thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you. And there being no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Tewald?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
And that resolution passes. It brings to a close our business agenda. We have three items on our ordinances for action, beginning with an ordinance amending the sign code relating to temporary special use and exempt signs in central business districts. Do council members have questions for Mr. Ivory? Councilmember Mitchell?
Thank you. I just want to preface my question by saying that I spent a lot of time on this and I studied it a lot, and it took me a long time to figure out exactly what was happening here. And I appreciate your patience with my questions at the Plan Commission, which were a little off-topic now, I realize. But I want to just, just to make clear and use the example of the time and temperature signs, which used to be in the sign code and they were described, and now that section of the sign code is crossed out. That doesn't mean that people can't have time and temperature signs. It just means that because they're content-based, that we can't regulate them. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, and really, there hasn't been a change in, well, the clause, the provision that you're talking about was an additional sign that would have been allowed for time and temperature. With the change, any business can still continue to have a time and temperature sign. In fact, in some cases, in the C1A, the Office Commercial District, that wasn't allowed in the past. Now it could be, since we're not regulating what the message says. So, I guess to summarize, any business can continue to have a time and temperature sign.
And may I have one more? But from the point of view of the sign holder, from the point of view of a person who has signs, these changes aren't probably going to affect them at all, other than that they have more flexibility for what they put on them.
Right. Yeah, these changes don't really limit any number of signs that a business can have. It really does provide more flexibility for them. They can display more messages than they were allowed to before.
Any other questions for Mr. Ivory? On a motion then by Councilmember Tewald, seconded by Councilmember Weld, item 21 is moved. Discussion? There being non-clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Tewald?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. The council thanks you, of course, Mr. Ivory, for so much detailed work and your expertise. Item 22 is an ordinance rezoning properties located on the south side of Hudson Street, west of Seventh Avenue, from RM to R2P. Do council members have questions regarding this rezoning? Councilmember Von Hayden?
For Mr. Tufti? It seemed like the concern last night that I heard from some of the people were related to the, going from the RN to the R2 zoning, was if they had a fire or their property was destroyed, they wouldn't be able to rebuild. And I understand that's part of the code. Is there any way we can alleviate that problem for these few places, or is there anything we can do about that?
If a property, if this were to be approved and a duplex had a fire, it can repair up to 50% of its fair market value. With the conditional use permit that Plan Commission has approved for these properties, it could then, if it was more than 50%, go to a Board of Appeals and get a variance. It's only if they decided, we're not going to repair what's there, instead we're going to demolish and build new, that this would be precluded under this ordinance. Then what normally happens, since there's history on others that have had this situation, council can still step in and remedy it by providing for a reduced lot size for the properties or some other amendment. And we've seen that with, the best example is at Lake and Third, that historic home that Mogenson owned burned. And there was actually a zoning code amendment that allowed that to be rebuilt as a sixplex within a R2 district, as long as it was a historic structure. So that's the normal process. To remedy this at this time, you would have to allow for a smaller lot size for duplexes for these properties, is basically what you'd be doing. And it wouldn't apply just if it were damaged. It'd apply if they chose to tear down and rebuild on the smaller lot. So there's a history with that in terms of, that was discussed this spring with Plan Commission and the Neighborhood Association, as to whether they wanted to look at that on a neighborhood-wide perspective. There's actually about 65 duplexes in this neighborhood on lots that are less than 10,000 square feet. And since this is a neighborhood that has substantial amount of investment for student rentals, it was, chose not to do it, simply because of the door you're opening and the potential for abuse to the situation. So that's kind of the best way I can describe it. There has been other neighborhoods that did choose to do that. The Eastside Hill, for example, chose to allow a reduced lot size for duplex development, but they don't have that pressure for student housing that you see in the Randall Park neighborhood.
So, as I understand what you're saying is, is that if a house was totally, or a duplex was totally destroyed, there is a avenue where it may be a lot of paperwork and rigmarole and it may not be approved, but there is an avenue where they possibly could get the process approved?
There's always an avenue because zoning is locally controlled. It's a council decision, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Tufti? I see none. So as is our custom, then, on a motion by Councilmember Von Hayden, seconded by Councilmember Mitchell, item 22 is moved. Discussion? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank our community for weighing in on this very important issue that is affecting many people's lives now and will affect the community in the future. We are, the city has been very intentional about revitalization efforts in the Randall Park neighborhood, and this is another step in multifaceted approach of making some long-term improvements. So I thank everybody for working on this. Thank you, Mr. Tufti, for your patience and working with this and shepherding the process and through here.
And further discussion? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Tewald?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. Item 23 is an ordinance also rezoning property located at 3807 Hamilton Avenue from R1 to R3P. It is my understanding that Mr. Tufti has some additional input about a point brought up last night regarding parking?
Councilmember Weld did ask about the parking limitations on the streets. I was provided this by our city engineer, and the areas in green are prohibited from parking on East Hamilton. The area in yellow has parking allowed during parent drop-off and pickup, but the rest of the day it has limited parking also. This is too narrow to actually park on this section of the street here, so.
And any further questions about Councilmember Von Hayden?
So what we're saying on this is there's basically no on-street parking in that area unless, for that duplex. Am I correct on that, then?
That's correct. You'd have to go a ways away to find it. Again, the eightplex does have 11 garage stalls and five surface parking stalls provided with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tufti. I see no further questions. Thank you. And on a motion then by Councilmember Worthman, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, item 23 is moved and discussion is in order. There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Kincaid?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Strobel?
Abstain.
Tewald?
Aye.
Von Hayden?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that ordinance is adopted. There are three ordinances for introduction tonight, and I will read them into the public record. The first, an ordinance rezoning property at 1814 Bellinger Avenue from RMP to C1P and to adopt a general development plan for a child play center. The second being an ordinance rezoning property at Harless Road from TR1A to R1P and to adopt a general development plan for reduced lot width therein. And then lastly, an ordinance amending the 2015 comprehensive planned land use map for property on Frank Street and rezoning these properties from R3 to 2CP and to adopt a general development plan for the Hope Gospel Mission Women's Facility. Does council wish to suspend the rules and take up any of these ordinances? I see no such request. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam President. Just two announcements. One is that Friday is the chamber's Ex-And Issue Legislative Breakfast, and if you've not signed up and would like to go, please talk to Kathy. And then, secondly, following this council meeting is a work session on economic development, obviously a very important and strategic issue for the community. And although we have a lot of wonderful things happening in the community, it's important that we continue to keep a focus on that and moving forward. And we hope that we've put together an informative and engaging opportunity for you to talk about economic development and what it means for you and what it means for our community. So, hope to see you upstairs in a little bit.
Any other announcements? And there being no further business to come before this body, on a motion by Councilmember Emanuel, seconded by Councilmember Beaton, we adjourn without objection.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the city of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call 715-839-4912 or TDD 715-839-1689 or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at valleymediaworks.org.